Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Carries. Item three, other business discussion and possible action regarding three A. Resolution twenty four oh nine, adopting a framework of agreement for combining police department with Saint Croix Falls.
Yes, this is resolution twenty four oh nine in front of you. Uh, we've been meeting um probably twice a month. Every two weeks with um Saint Croix Falls regarding the combination of police department. This resolution in front of you would authorize us to start working in a framework for uni- union negotiations with the combined department and what the parameters will look like for that. It would also kind of give us the permission to go ahead and really start formalizing what this agreement is going to look like. Uh, exhibit A attached to it is kind of the joint police department agreement that we're working on in these meetings. Uh, one thing today came, um, we have a, a leading name, what'd you say?
Yeah.
Would you just call that kind of the name that we're tentatively working on going with was um River Valley PD.
Sounds great.
So that is the name they're tentatively working on getting. Um, there's still some fine details we're working on such as what's the, the structure of the apartment going to look like? The administration costs and that and those other areas that we're still working on as, as a group. But this today is a resolution authorizing, saying that yes, we are going to work towards this and allowing us to do some other things as we uh, get closer to the combination date of January one.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the resolution that also allows the combined department to apply for whatever state numbers needed to be registered as a department?
We will do that. We will do that after we get a tentative agreement with the union because we want to make sure we can get a union.
Yep.
Contract and that would go for the department number. That is uh, first and foremost important that we have a contract that the union of the police officers would accept. Because we have to mold two contracts currently, the same correct contract with Yasiola contract, so we have to negotiate a new contract for this. As this police department would be its own entity, it would not be owned, it would not be um ran by one municipality.
Okay, and Village's recommendation is that we have a motion to adopt this?
Motion to adopt today, yep.
Uh, are we entertaining, I have a question about, I guess, exhibit A as I was reading it, I don't know if this is the forum to bring that up or not.
You're not, I'll, I'll just say this, exhibit A is strictly what we've been working on, it's not a final document in any pass, you're not approving that tonight, you're just.
No, I get that, yeah. Okay, well, I was just curious, it mentioned that the board would have a president, by chair, vice chair, something, and then a clerk. And it made me wonder, like, the, you know, all of our clerk support comes from Kerry and.
Was it secretary clerk?
Secretary, I'm sorry, it was a secretary.
Positions in the board, so.
That's a board position, so I guess maybe when you reference that administrative stuff is still being worked, worked out. I would imagine there will be like paid staff support to assist in the maintenance of records and meeting notices and.
So what's going to happen there is you have a police, you have a police admin assistant, so they're handling all the police stuff. However, stuff such as payroll, paying the taxes, one municipality is going to have to pay, is going to have to do all that for reporting purposes as we're not going to create a payroll clerk just for the police department. So what, one of the municipalities, right now it's Ossio would, would, would be doing the administration work such as that, the payroll, the, the quarterly taxes, the annual taxes, the given the, the W twos, the W fours, all that out. Um, and then there will be a fee charged to the other city for, for that. So that is one thing we're still working on, is figuring out what that amount is going to be. Right now, it looks like Ossio is the one going to be handling the administration part of it for the payroll, just because we, we're not going to combine it, there's not enough work for one person to do that as a new staff member in the police department.
And then would Ossio's staff also be in charge of like meeting notices and minutes and all of that governance stuff as well?
We have talked about that in meetings.
Yeah, from my understanding is the, the police, the, this police department is going to have its own board. And that board will answer to the village of Ossio and the city of Saint Croix Falls. But within that board, you'll have, right now, the working document is two representatives from Saint Croix, two from Ossio and one at large. And then those members would be president, vice president, or treasurer type thing to be kind of self-sufficient, self-contained.
Okay.
As a result of that, any administrative work that Ossio does, if they're designated as the administrative department, would be billed for that, that will be in the budget, so it would be the financial cost, it would be split between the two communities.
I was just asking, because as I read it, it read to me like meeting, you know, they were saying the secretary will create and then distribute meeting notices to the municipality's clerks, which meant that a board member would be in charge of that work, and I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding that.
You're, you're, you're correct, that, that's the setup right now. Um, the meeting notices will still be posted in all the places that we post them currently, both in Saint Croix and in Ossio. Because they will have to adhere to the open medium law, just like everyone else. Uh, the secretary would be the one responsible for that. However, that board, when it's created, can deem one of the administrators or whatever they deem necessary for the record keeping of that.
And I guess the reason I'm raising it is because my suspicion would be that someone will be the secretary, but then there will be a staff person that ultimately ends up doing that work, and I read it and got nervous that, that, and I, you guys are doing a great, this is not any kind of critique, but just like, the way that that's likely to go is if one of you is the secretary, you're going to be needing assistance with that.
And chances are, that's why there's going to be a little cushion, I mean, not a cushion, but you know, there's going to be that administration fee that we talked about, yeah.
Yeah, it should be just built in to the agreement.
I think during this process too, you've been in contact with Kerry and Tanya, right, about, about roles and work if needed and stuff?
We, Tanya and I have been talking about what, what it looks like for her to do the payroll and all the recording, the necessary recording. We've kind of figured out uh, an estimate of what it's going to cost time-wise, so we have a labor estimate for that, for that amount. Uh, we're just going to double check that before we present it back to Ossio, I mean, to Saint Croix, I was kind of wondering if that number was too high. And I was kind of questioning if the number was too low. So um, we're really trying to figure out what the administration fee is going to be, that's still one of the numbers that we have to make sure we get ironed out.
So we're going to be looking at full-time staff to do that part for us as a, as a new commission. Um, because obviously, we change out every two years, because we're establishing that too, is that timeline. And it just makes sense, and that will be budgeted and as to what the administrator is.
Yeah, and that makes sense, it makes sense to me that a staff member would run those kinds of ultimately clerical things.
Yeah.
Um, and I just wanted to ask about that.
And we're going to be meeting once a month also, um, just like a lot of other committees where they are attending. So, you know, yeah, keep track of the minutes and those types of things, so.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I have no questions.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the current resolution before us.
I will make a motion uh, to approve resolution twenty four dash oh nine and adopting framework of agreement for combining police departments, uh, police departments of Ossio and the city of Saint Croix Falls.
Thanks, Van.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Van and a second by Arvid to adopt resolution twenty four oh nine, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Motion carries. All right, three B, Veterans Memorial Site and Memorandum of Understanding.
Um, well, after the meeting, we received a signed copy of the memorandum of understanding with some cross-outs from, from Waterworks Irrigation. Um, here are the changes that were recommended by Waterworks Irrigation. Um, because there was a change in the MOU, we cannot accept it without board, going, coming back to board as this changed the substance of the MOU. Uh, it goes from a lifetime um, uh, system repair to if the company that buys uh, Waterworks Irrigation wants to buy it, I mean, take this MOU over, they can, but they're not obligated to. That's what uh, they were, Tom was comfortable with, and that's what he crossed out, and I said, we cannot accept it with crossed out, we have to go back to the board and make sure that's a finalized printed document on it. Uh, because it was more than just clerical changes, this was actually a substance change, it's back to you guys to making sure that is that. If you're not happy with this MOU, um, but you still were interested in the irrigation, I would just recommend the acceptance of the, the irrigation system, uh, the installation of the, the installation of the irrigation system free of charge, with the understanding that there would be no ongoing maintenance.
Or worst case scenario, if a person or per entity were to purchase Waterworks and not want to continue this MOU, is the village then on the hook for maintenance of that system?
Yep. And that's why I said, if you're not in favor of the MOU, you could, you could just choose to accept the free, the free irrigation system. It was noted that those were the, the parameters that were discussed at the May meeting with the Veteran Memorial, uh, we just simply put them into words and then the, the mood changed on that one.
Is there a type of feeling that they are anytime soon selling their company, or that's just something to protect themselves?
I think it's protect themselves and potential future sale of business that might happen within the next few years.
So there is an inkling that it could happen in the next few years?
Possibly.
I suppose it, you know, giving, selling it was a free service included in the sale.
A little bit of an anchor.
Little bit of a problem, yeah, I get it.
But I'm also not interested in accepting a future liability in cost either. This was pitched to us as something that wouldn't be taken care of without village involvement, and now there's a risk.
That's true.
Although they did the same thing for the ambulance house, and there hasn't been issues since.
No, but we also pay them over forty thousand dollars every time we renew their contract.
This can be something too, that if this is not acceptable, we just go to the Veterans Memorial Group and say, you're responsible for the maintenance of it.
In the event that the company that purchases is not interested in living out that agreement?
Because without, without the gift, the village would not be putting a irrigation system over there.
That's true.
I would say that's, seems acceptable, that if the veterans group is willing to take on that cost if it arises because of a sale, that seems reasonable. If they would agree to that.
And there's no, there's no guarantee that Tom will sign this document as is currently either.
Okay, then. I'm with Marsha then, I think we need to counter a little bit with some protection of the liability that the village sees now.
So back to the drawing board.
Well, they, I know the materials are in order and they're ready to install. Um, so that's why I was saying it's a way we can accept the gift. And I hate, I hate to do so without, you know, understanding what's going to happen for the long-term maintenance of it. If, if you're willing to accept this memo of understanding, um, go forward, try to get it approved, like I said, I can't guarantee that Tom is going to sign it. Um, but at least I can do is bring it before him. These are his changes that, you know, he crossed out and added to it after the meeting.
Do we have, because I don't know, anyone have an idea of these costs for winterizing, replacing, and a failure, like, what could that look like as far as a cost, does anyone have any idea?
I don't know.
It's, it's a blowout, you know, with a hair compressor on it, um, you know, if you do, like a, a home is going to cost you between seventy-five, a hundred fifty dollars, if you have a company come on and do it.
I would hate to not be able to accept this gift.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree, and from a business standpoint, and like the Van said, I don't blame him for saying, right, I may sell this.
I thought in the original agreement, when the commitment was made, that this would carry through a sale, I raised an eyebrow for that reason, and also because I was like, can you even, I, it just, it felt like it was set in a meeting and maybe hadn't been thought through fully. And I, I don't know, I mean, I think if, if the system goes kaput down the road and the village doesn't have the money to fix it, then there will just be a dormant irrigation system stuck in the ground over there, you know, it's not like it's something that absolutely must be maintained at all costs once we have it. And I think if there's a commitment.
That's a good point.
You know, like, if it breaks, okay, we're not going to water it.
Can we, can we wait, uh, can we wait on this until our next regular board meeting, and then in turn, reach out to the Veterans Memorial and say, here's the understanding?
That's what I was going to ask, and we could maybe shore this up, clean it up before the July meeting.
Uh, I will talk to Paul, yeah. So I can't, I can't imagine they're installing it next week over the fourth, week of the fourth.
Exactly, yeah.
And I think too, like, take this conversation with Tom and like get a clear understanding of whether or not that's acceptable or not, so that we aren't chasing our tails.
Right.
And the worst case scenario is the system fails and we turn off the water.
Yeah, and then it just sits tubing in the ground, until we decide someday down the road that we want to fix it. You know, I, I think that it's not a street, it's not a building, you know, it can just sit there.
We probably want to make that part of our
Right.
explanation, we're accepting the gift, but we have nothing in our budget to repair this if it fails, and so it may end up sitting dormant if it fails.
Yeah, and I think that would be a good point to make to the veterans group, like, we want to accept it, we want to help you with this, but if it goes kaput, there's no guarantee we're going to fix it.
I think that's fair.
I do too, yeah.
Very fair.
Do you recommend board action now?
Um, you, you guys can give definitely your parameters to work on if you're ingredients tonight, that I can pursue this MOU, and if it doesn't, you know, come bear fruit, go with that recommendation right there. That the vet, as long as people understand that we accept the gift, and that if the MOU is not signed.
Yeah, and I think our choice to, if it were to break, to leave it dormant is independent of what is covered by this MOU.
Totally.
So we could theoretically, we could theoretically take board action to accept this MOU.
Yeah.
And he can sign on our behalf, and then if and when we ever have to make that determination down the road, we can.
If it breaks, if it breaks, and if he chooses not to fix it, then we decide that later.
Yep.
Does that need to be in here?
I don't think it, that's independent, yeah, because as long as Waterworks is owned by them, then that's, it's a moot point, it's only if there, if there's a sale that occurs, so.
And if this does not pass muster with him, you, you, that's why I say maybe a motion to accept the gift too, without the MOU, but.
I'm all right with both, after having hashed that out, I think you guys brought up some great points.
I think, I think the long-term risk, we can just choose not to bear it.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, we're not, we're not bound to it.
So we're looking for.
A motion to accept the MOU, yeah.
I will make a motion to accept the MOU as it was presented to us.
Thank you, Arvid. There's a second? Thanks, Van. We have a motion by Arvid and a second by Van to accept the MOU as presented, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Carries. All right, item three C, Cascade Falls Stairs Update.
Yes, last week, the eighteenth and nineteenth, we experienced um, heavy rain in, in large amounts. Um, with that, the, the Milhouse area last year was demoed, the riprap fell down and slid down the hill into blocking the path to Cascade Falls. Um, I have, we've reached out to our insurance company, we currently have no answer yet from the insurance company, they're supposed to give that to us tomorrow. I have reached out to the county emergency system or emergency area um, to discuss what possibly state action could be done for an event like this. So first, we need to find out what the insurance is and, is and not going to cover regarding this, they could deem this as something they don't cover, something they do cover. We, we're not sure at this point what's going to happen on that avenue. However, uh, whatever's not covered by insurance, because this would, this will meet the threshold for a kind of a disaster type situation, there is potential for some state funds to help us with, with this project to get the stairs open again. So um, kind of just giving updated where we're at, we don't have all the information at this time, as you know, it takes insurance companies some, some time to get to it. But I, I kind of want, I want us on the agenda so you guys are aware of what is going on, and that we're trying everything we can to get the stairs open as fast as we can. Um, after, once we start working with the state, we have to get estimates to see how much it's going to cost to, to get that, to see what the state will cover. Um, and some of our expenses such as staff time, signage, and all that can, can be reimbursable. So there's, there's some avenues that we have the staff to go through too. Uh, first, we have to get a, uh, information from the insurance company, see what they're going to cover. Uh, with that, uh, I just want to keep you apprised of what's happening, tell the public that, yes, we know this is important and working on this, and we want it open as fast as everyone else. And I'm happy to find out that our funds available to help us get this open. Uh, because without, without the state or insurance, we would not have the budget to, to open the stairs, so we're looking at every avenue we can to, to go ahead and do that.
Yeah, and I think it's not necessarily removing the debris as it is protecting the north side of the stairway, because that's where the debris fell from and onto the stairs, because I locked it with the insurance adjuster yesterday and there's, it's not a ton of debris that's on the stairs, but preventing additional debris from coming onto the stairs requires more than what we had.
And we will not open the stairs until it's safe for the public.
Exactly, yeah, making it safe is the more expensive thing that needs to be done, so. The stairs themselves are structurally sound, like no wood portion of the stairs was affected, it was only the concrete landing and concrete steps that experienced debris and.
And that rock.
And yeah, and everything else is, is fine, the stairway's fine, it's just it's covered with debris at the moment.
There any type of press release to our community about that and about?
Uh, currently, we have, we have, uh, we did an email update that people sign up for our email updates, that the stairs are currently closed. It's running across the banner of our website too, that the stairs are closed.
And I think it was in the paper this week too, it was an article in the paper, yeah.
Yeah, so we're making sure public's aware of it, and we want to, we want to get this thing fixed, just like everyone else, everyone else will make sure it's a long-lasting fix as ten, ten and fifty-year rainfalls are happening almost every year now, so we want to make sure this will not happen again.
Yeah, and Marsha brings up a good point though, like when we have more substantive
Yep.
information to share, put it up on the village website right away, so. It's good, that's a good thing to bring up.
But people are not filling in the blanks themselves with inaccurate.
You'll have that anyway, but.
Which they will do.
Which they will.
Yes, there's plenty of that.
Since we own that parcel, is there a threat, do we know if there's a continued threat to the adjacent parcel, PYs?
I asked the insurance adjuster that, and he didn't observe anything that brought him any concern at all. The infringement is, if you consider where the riprap starts to where PY's property starts, it's probably about twenty percent into the village-owned property, the rest of it is not moved.
And then talking with Todd today, um, for the Public Works meeting, he said that the, the real concern right now, most, most of the stuff that they can tell has fallen, or has fallen, there's not a big threat for it to continue, but, you know, nobody knows for sure with the rains and everything else, but
Yeah.
there, there does appear to be an imminent threat like Brad was saying.
Yeah.
I'm just curious what our liability would be if it were to continue to fail.
Yeah, I brought that up to the, to the adjuster, I said, you need to be mindful of what there might be for future liability, because if this, we experience this again, whatever award you may give us to fix this, needs to be done correctly. So, because otherwise, they're going to have to go for reinsurance, you know, to an additional supplemental claim, so. Good there?
Yep.
Okay, uh, three D, Yellow House Demo Discussion.
Yes, we are currently in the process, uh, um, we should have more information on this in the coming weeks. Uh, there was supposed to be information released um, for the demo specs, um, and those were not um, done in a timely manner, so those are not able to get out to people to bid the process. Uh, we're also removing a few things from, from the demo to get underneath the sealed bid threshold, which is twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we have other projects in the future such as uh, the, the Veteran Memorial, getting the water line in there, and then also the ice rink, that we can wrap that in other projects to help lower this cost, so we can just go get quotes and, and bids, not sealed bids, because the sealed bid process is much more lengthy and involved. So it would be, we have interested companies that are willing to come in and demo, but we need to get them the bid specs for that. Um, and hopefully we get that here by the end of the week, so I can get those two companies, we're going to extend that deadline a little longer because it's supposed to be Friday. Uh, we're extending the deadline, and it should not affect the demo of the house by the time the project is over. And that's making sure that we get everything done correctly.
Okay.
Any concerns on that?
You're pulling out the utility abandonment then as well, that's one of the other things you were going to pull out to get under the twenty-five thousand threshold?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, that area is going to get torn up a little bit when the, when the irrigation stuff gets set up too, so there might be some opportunity there, so. Okay, just keep moving with it so that we don't lose track of it.
Oh, it's important that that house is demoed in timely manner, so everything is open up and ready to go.
Cool. All right, that's it for that one, um, three E, twenty twenty-four Capital Improvement Plan, Department of Public Works Truck Replacement.
Yeah, people from the Public Works meeting want to take this one today.
I was appointed chair of Public Works. Um, we discussed with Todd, yes. Um, he went out and collected the, the bids that you see there, and I want to commend them for uh, a strong example of using the recovery and reimbursement account, um, from things that have been sold, combined with the CIP dollars we've allocated to make a purchase um, in this vehicle, um, that they, that they're looking to make. Todd mentioned that the previous truck that they sold, they did in a private sale because they were, I think, did he say ten grand more than the dealer was going to give them for it? Or was it eight or something? So he got, they, I think, I, I was pleased, and I think we all were pleased that they were able to capture um, a healthy amount more than the dealer would have given them for that sale, and so that, that money with a little bit of money, I think, from a couple of other things, you know, that he's been selling off, um, is being combined with that CIP budget item to purchase this truck, um, so it passed Public Works this morning, uh, and I think we're here now.
I think the recommendation was to purchase the, the Ford. Uh, the, the, was it five?
The five fifty, the five fifty.
Yes.
Part of the reasoning for that is they realized that with their other trucks, that he did eleven-foot bed, and this has that as well. So that's why he recommended or requested that one.
The only question that I have, I think, Neil, maybe you can help answer this, is are you comfortable with Todd's argument to justify the larger truck?
I trust Todd to know what equipment he needs, and I think that um, he had robust explanations for why he need, he felt they needed the bigger bed, why they felt they needed the more robust vehicle. They're sticking with the gas instead of diesel, which as I understand it, is intended to make things easier for them, so I, I, I left the meeting comfortable that Todd had researched the options that were available to them, and that he was identifying the option that would fit their need. I don't know if any, Marsha or, or Ron, if you want to comment on that.
Completely agree, Todd comes prepared, and I feel like he did a lot of work on the back end, and these things are not made to order, this is a vehicle that could run away at any moment and could sell to someone else, so I think time is of the essence, and I agree that I feel like Todd has done the work on the back end. Ron, anything else?
No, I agree too, this is the vehicle they think will fit the need, and it doesn't cost the village any extra because of the, the work they did. So I, I fully agree, it's probably the best one.
Okay.
I'll make a, a motion that we approve the purchase of the uh, um, Ford five fifty, right?
Okay.
And uh, for the CIP um, account.
Thanks, Van. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thanks, Ron, we have a motion by Van and a second by Ron to approve the purchase of the F five fifty from Stevens Point Auto Center. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post say no. Motion carries. Okay, I think we've reached the end of our agenda, um, item four, future agenda items and updates, Neil?
I'm wondering if we might have an opportunity to get an update on the comprehensive plan?
Uh, yes, uh, there's going to be, next Tuesday, there is, uh, they're doing the second, second part of the planning commission is handling uh, the second big chunk they're talking about at that meeting. So, and we're still on, we're still on pace for an August, September open house. But the planning commission's handling that at the July meeting. They're taking over, there's like seven sections they're working on, they're doing two and three on, on Tuesday.
Okay. Van?
Nothing for me.
Ron?
No, just to build off what Neil was saying, we talked about this a little bit today. Um, I'm a proponent for, for planning, even though we may not have the funds for a project now, like the skate park kind of came up last minute because the funds are raised so fast. the skate park kind of came up last minute because of the funds that were raised so fast and the opportunities that arose. Even though we don't have the money for the bathrooms right now or complete layout, it would sure be nice. Example for this project to have a futuristic look of what we want where, right? Um, the same thing goes with these, these, the steps, the falls, right? When it happened, we had an opportunity to take that milkhouse down and get those, get those stairs open up right away, which is great. But I think if we, if there's any future improvements or if we can fix this, we need to look to the future and say, we have no funds right now to make that area a deck, overlook or walk around, but when we do, we should prepare now and have it at least sustained, strong and flat and level. So if we want to move forward in the future with the project, we can do that. So I would just be a proponent of more advanced planning if possible. I know sometimes we have to jump at stuff when we have the money or because it's an urgency. But I think proper planning for the village overall creates a culture that the board will continue, the future boards will continue to do. Instead of just slapping this here, slapping that there, because we have the money now or we have to do it. I'd like to see more planning to ensure that our community grows at maximum moving forward and then it's the nicest it could look with planning, so. My only comments are those.
Thanks, Ron. Arvid?
I'll follow on to that. You know, I, I wasn't thinking this, but it kind of matches with what I have thought. You know, I worked at school, we would do strategic planning. I don't know if that's something that can be done with the village board, but it is exactly what they're talking about.
I think our CIP discussion will touch on that, so. Cool. Thanks, Arvid. Marsha?
Um, if anyone is available prior to the July meeting, um, we will have a groundbreaking ceremony for the skate park at five PM, Tuesday, July ninth, if anyone is able to make it.
That's the same day as the meeting, right?
Yep.
It's right before?
Yeah. So that's five PM, meeting is at six PM.
Do we get shovels and a high vis vest?
High vis shirts.
High vis shirts, hmm. Very exciting.
The ground might already be broken. But that's exciting. So it'll more be a meet and greet of the crew and, um, uh, yeah, people are excited.
Cool.
I think the only thing I have is just remind visiting people over the coming weeks that there is more than one way to go to the waterfalls. Um, you can definitely take the additional trail that goes alongside two forty-three and then down under the bridge to come in the back way, so. And that's the way we handled it when the milkhouse was at risk, so. You know, we'll have to continue to talk about that as an option for the future. I know that's a little goat path alongside two forty-three, but you know, it's, it's safer in my opinion than, than, uh, condoning people hopping over the fence and potentially injuring themselves as they climb over debris. Cause I've seen that happen too, so. But that's the only thing I have, so. Okay. Well, with that, we will adjourn at six thirty-three. Thanks, everybody.